Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, June 15th, meeting of the City Council. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting audio and video recording for public broadcast. I ask anyone in the audience who is recording this meeting to please stand and identify yourself by name and address for the record. Seeing none, Counselor Green, would you please lead us in salute to the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please conduct the roll?
President Zerella.
Here.
Counselor Boishman.
Right here.
Counselor Kucher.
Here.
Counselor Dina Tally.
Here.
Counselor Fleming.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Hughes.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Squallia.
President.
Counselor Van Hazinga.
Here.
Counselor Walsh.
Here.
Thank you. The public had been advised to contact the City Clerk’s office by noon today regarding any comments of no more than two minutes, and none have been brought to our attention. If there is anyone in the audience who would like to make remarks on any subject on the agenda, the public forum is now open. Please approach the center table, identify yourself by name and address, and speak for not more than two minutes. Seeing none, I’d just like to take a second to welcome the public back into these in-person meetings. It is very nice to have you here and to have us all together again. We will begin tonight’s agenda. First, we have a report from the Appointments Committee, Counselor Hughes. Sorry, records. We have no... I’m sorry, I’m getting myself out of order now. We have no report from the Appointments Committee. We do, however, have the promotion of Officer Raboin, who will be sworn in this evening. Chief Martino, if you would like to approach?
Good evening, Councillors.
Good evening.
Well, it’s nice to be back in the room face-to-face with everybody. And it worked out really well this evening that a couple of weeks ago, I asked the mayor to make a promotion within my department. I needed another police supervisor in my training division, and he agreed to the promotion. And I was happy to report to him that Officer Raboin, prior Officer Raboin, was the top of our sergeant’s list. Bob has been an employee with the City of Pittsburgh since 2011, and I couldn’t ask for a better person to take on the responsibilities as sergeant. And it gave me great pleasure putting his name in front of the mayor. So it’s great to be back, that we can actually welcome him in front of the City Council as he takes on his new leadership role in the Police Department. And I have the utmost confidence in his ability to lead in the future.
Thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President, can I ask my question?
I suppose if he’s willing to answer it.
Me or the sergeant?
The sergeant.
Oh, perfect.
I just want to know, does your father work at GE?
My grandfather.
Your grandfather? All right. All right, thanks.
So this is all new, in a new chambers? Do we want to do it right in the middle of?
Sure.
Should it work well?
That sounds great. You can come right on up. And I am going to step aside so that I’m not photobombing any of the family pictures.
Officer Raboin, if you would kindly raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly promise and swear.
I solemnly promise and swear.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
And to the best of my knowledge and ability.
Best of my knowledge and ability.
Perform and discharge.
Perform and discharge.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
All the duties incumbent upon me.
As a permanent police sergeant.
As a permanent police sergeant.
For the City of Pittsburgh Police Department.
For the City of Pittsburgh Police Department.
So long.
So long.
Congratulations.
Mr. President, I’d just like to thank you for allowing my department to come into Council Chiefs and recognizing the competition. I’d like to thank the members of the Police Department who are present tonight, but a big thank you to the City Council for letting us come out and take part.
Thank you as well, and you and your officers are always welcome here. We will now hear a report from the Committee on Records, Counselor Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, at this time, our records appear to be in order.
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
Have a motion and second. If there is no objection, we’ll do this by unanimous consent. Hearing none, it is approved. Next, we have some communications from His Honor, the Mayor. Two reappointment letters. David Roth, as a member of the Human Rights Commission, term to expire May 1st, 2024, and Basil Tolos, as a member of the Pittsburgh Disability Commission, term to expire February 1st, 2024. If any... If you’d like to come up and say a few words, you’re welcome to do so.
You don’t have to.
You don’t have to, but we do thank you for your services to the city. Counselor Green?
Yes, I would like to just comment on both Mr. Roth and Mr. Tolos, that they have been an incredible asset to both of those boards that they sit on, representing not only the Human Rights Commission, but the Disability Commission as well. So I want to once again extend my thank you from the City of Pittsburgh for stepping up and taking on that role. Thank you.
And...
Keep up the good work.
I’m sorry?
I said totally, keep up the good work.
I agree. Those will both be sent to the Appointments Committee. We also have some new appointment letters. Chris Bojold, as a member of the Pittsburgh Redevelopment Authority, term to expire July 1st, 2026. Munna Kangson, as a member of the Trustees of the Public Library, term to expire July 1st, 2023. And Dennis Pierce, as a member of the Trustees of the Public Library, term to expire July 1st, 2023. If any of those individuals are here, I don’t see them, but they would be welcome to come up as well. But those will also be sent to the Appointments Committee. Next, we have a continued public hearing on 02421, for a public hearing for the laying out of a portion of Tibbet Circle as a public street or way. I now declare the continued public hearing open. Would you like to present the matter to the council?
Sure. Thank you, President Zerella. So this is a continuation of an issue to accept Tibbet Circle as a public way, continued from the last meeting that we heard this at, which was, I believe, several months ago. So following that meeting, DPW Engineering took a site visit to the roadway that’s being considered for adoption, to review concerns that were brought up during the last meeting. Several issues were brought up, including flooding, streetlights, concrete sidewalk patchwork, and uneven pavement joints. So one thing I wanted to note is that I think a lot of the issues that were being discussed during the previous meeting were in reference to a portion of Tibbet Circle that has already been accepted as a public way, and was done so in December of 2005, per Order Number 352-05. So the section that we’re considering tonight is just the easternmost half of Tibbet Circle, and it’s shown in a figure that I sent to the City Council for review. So this other portion that we’re considering for adoption tonight, it’s much newer than the portion that was completed and accepted in 2005. It’s actually in fairly good condition, considering the age of the development. A lot of the issues that... None of the issues that were brought up during the last meeting were applicable to this portion of the roadway. It’s, like I said, in fairly good condition, with the exception of a few things noted in my report, one being a streetlight that looked like it had been hit by a motor vehicle at some point and is leaning. But again, I don’t think that’s due to a fault of the developer. I think it’s just a damage that’s occurred because it sat for so long before being adopted as a public way. There has been some patchwork done on the sidewalk, most notably in the area of two driveways that looked like they were paved somewhat recently, and they extended the pavement in either direction along the sidewalk. Everything else appeared to be in fairly good condition, like I said, much better condition than the other half of Tibbet Circle that’s already been adopted as a public way. With that said, I’ll answer any questions you might have.
Questions from council? I have Counselor Green.
What is the cost figure to the City of Pittsburgh to fix the repairs that you brought up, to bring it up to the as-built standard that we’re asking for?
So I don’t have a total figure off the top of my head. I can give you some rough numbers tonight. Fixing that streetlight will cost approximately $5,000. I don’t believe any repairs to the sidewalk are really necessary. Everything’s in fairly good condition. There is a mismatch in materials between the asphalt adjacent to those two driveways, as I noted, and the concrete and the rest of the development. But nothing’s really in poor condition, considering the condition of the rest of the roads in the city. This is probably one of the best. Aside from that, most of the issues that I saw were within the section of Tibbet Circle that was previously adopted in 2005, including the failure of pavement at the asphalt joints between the old, previously-accepted portion and the new portion. Those are items that are, at this point, a maintenance issue for DPW, because it’s within a previously-accepted portion of the roadway. So I would say, you know, $5,000 to $10,000 to replace that streetlight and maybe do some crack sealing on the roadway, which is something that we do as a preventative maintenance measure anyways.
And DPW and Waste Management has maintained that whole, the east and the west side. It’s not like we drive up half the road and stop the plowing or stop the maintenance of it. We’ve continued to care for Tibbet Circle, the whole of Tibbet Circle, since its inception, right?
That’s correct, I believe. I don’t think the plows stop at that pavement joint between the old and the new section. I believe they continue around the full circle. We can’t fix any of the outstanding issues, including that streetlight, until the road is adopted as a public way. So I think it’s in the best interest of the residents that have lived there for, you know, 10 or 15 years since it’s been constructed, to adopt it as a public way, so we can fix those issues. Like I said, I don’t think that the issue with that particular streetlight is any fault of the developer. If anything, it’s probably the city’s fault for not adopting the roadway in a timely manner. I don’t know why it wasn’t done in a timely manner. I took over from my predecessor earlier this year, late last year, so I don’t have the answer as to why it sat for so long. But we’re here now, and I think it’s in the residents’ best interest to accept it as a public way. We can take care of any outstanding issues, but I don’t see us as being fair if we require the developer to make those corrections.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I have Counselor Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had a phone call from Mr. Morrison at 172 Tibbet Circle, and apparently, his house, the house next door, and I’m not exactly sure what those numbers are, but I can get those to you, and the house across the street, they were three homes that were added at the... They were the last three homes to be built on Tibbet Circle. And apparently, all of the other homes have decorative trees in front of their homes, except for those three.
Yeah.
And he was wondering if that’s a possibility to have those finished or not.
So it is a possibility. So I did... We performed a site walk with the actual developer that constructed the neighborhood. He did mention those outstanding trees. He said he would be open to installing those trees as a condition of acceptance as a public way. He didn’t have an issue with it. He just hadn’t done it because he wasn’t sure if the residents really wanted those trees installed or not. So hearing that that is the case, we can work with the developer to make sure that happens.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Boishman?
One question. With the joint in the road, I was up there checking out your paperwork and that.
Yeah.
Are you going to try to fix that? And if so, why? It actually slows cars down, so why would you want to? I mean, you know, the road’s pretty good, like you said, I’ve been up there, and I... But to go slow right there.
Right.
I think it’s a deterrent where people just slow down.
It might cause people to slow down, I don’t disagree with that. The issue that you have with a failed pavement joint like that is you get water kind of seeping down in that joint, and it causes the subgrade in that whole area to fail. And then you have continued failure of the pavement, and what is a small section of roadway that’s failed becomes a larger section of roadway that’s failed. So the goal would be to, you know, patch that up as, you know, as we can.
All right. And I think one manhole cover, do you mention that in your thing?
The manhole cover is actually outside of the portion being considered for acceptance as a public way tonight, but it is in very poor condition.
Right.
My concern with leaving a pavement joint or a manhole like that is, over the winter, plows hit it, and it becomes really bad in a very short amount of time. So it’s better to just address that issue and not have to deal with a larger failure later on down the line.
All right. I’m happy with the results. What was up there?
Thank you. Any further questions from... Counselor Green?
I guess my only question would be, with the decorative trees out front, is it your opinion that if we’re going to do maintenance on the sidewalks and try to keep the sidewalks flat and level and from heaving, do tree roots, do they contribute to that problem? And if they do, why would we not offer a substitute versus a tree that wouldn’t uproot the sidewalk that we’re going to spend thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars to replace or fix?
So they do cause problems when they’re installed in close proximity to the sidewalk. There were a few spots within the development, and I think I might have taken a picture of that somewhere in my report. But there are a few spots where tree roots have started to push up sidewalk panels along the side where there is sidewalk. The area where these trees have not been planted is actually on the other side of the road, where there is no sidewalk currently. So I don’t think we’ll have that issue if we install trees in those locations. But you are right, you know, in the future, when we consider these types of subdivisions, you know, that’s one thing that DPW is kind of keeping an eye on, and making sure that trees are planted away from the sidewalks or within an approved tree box, so that the roots don’t, you know, grow into the sidewalk and push up the sidewalk panels.
And is it the DPW’s department to keep those ornamental trees, which are quite large up there, and that’s nice for an established neighborhood, but whose job is to keep those trees maintained and cut and up off from hitting the limbs of the big trucks? I’m just going to use snow plowing as an example.
Sure.
When the contractors or the city is up there plowing.
I think ultimately, it becomes DPW’s responsibility if the tree is located within the city’s layout. If the trees are outside of the layout, then they’re the private property owner’s responsibility. So in this case, there are trees within the layout, including the trees that have not been installed yet. So after they’re planted, DPW is on the hook for maintaining those, because they’re located within the public way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions from council? Are there any persons in the audience wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Any wishing to speak in opposition? If all have been heard, I declare the hearing closed. The matter is now before the council.
Make a motion, we accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept. We’re going to do this by a roll call. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zerella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And we now have the Order 02521, laying out a portion of Tibbet Circle as a public way. That is before the council.
Move to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Since we just took a roll call vote, if there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent, unless you feel that we need a roll call.
I don’t think so.
Okay. Then if there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing none?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, sure. We’ll take another roll call.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zerella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Just give the vocal cords a little more exercise tonight. All right. We now have a report from the Finance Committee. Counselor Dina Tally?
Mr. President, the Finance Committee met last Tuesday, June 8th, and took up a slew of orders and grant acceptancies that I will not read in full.
Certainly. Am I correct in recalling that they were all unanimous?
All were unanimous.
Move to accept the report.
Second.
I have a motion and second to accept the report and recommendations of the Finance Committee. If there is no objection, we will do this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is approved. We have a final reading for Loan Order 09421, to appropriate $4 million to pay the costs of various wastewater infrastructure projects, as outlined in the enclosed loan order.
Move to its third and final reading, enrolled, ordained, and advertised.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zerella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
Thank you. If there is no objection, we’ll waive reading of 124 through 13121 and forward them to the Finance Committee. Seeing no objection, we will skip over that reading. We now have 10921, Mary Di Alderetti, City Clerk, to review the mayor’s salary and city councilor’s salary as required by Chapter 3-43 of the Code of the City of Pittsburgh. We had sent this to this meeting from the budget meeting.
Move to approve.
I’m not sure what the effect of approving the petition would be exactly. I would recommend that we either entertain suggestions tonight, or more likely, send this to either the Finance Committee or a council as a whole committee, and have councilors send recommendations to the City Clerk prior to that meeting. Counselor Boishman?
I want to make a recommendation that we start off at $160,000 a year.
Well, first, I think we need to decide if we’re taking up the matter tonight or not.
Move to... Move to council as a whole committee.
Second.
On the motion, Counselor Dina Tally?
I have to recuse myself for obvious reasons?
Yes.
Oh.
I thought that might be what you were going for.
What’s your reason for that?
For the record, the only discussion thus far has been whether to take up this matter, so Counselor Dina Tally has not illicitly participated. I have a motion and second, send this to a council as a whole committee, as this is in effect a motion for suspension of the rules. We will take this as another roll call vote.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
Aye.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
President Zerella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Definitely, yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally? Oh, I’m sorry, he’s recused. Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
So this will be sent to council as a whole committee, which, if there is no objection from councilors, the date of that committee will be scheduled by myself in concert with the City Clerk at a later date and forwarded to the council. Counsel Green?
Just for clarification, do we send comments before that to you, or do we wait and have open discussion during council as a whole meeting?
There will be an opportunity for open discussion, but I would ask that councilors submit their actual proposals for any changes to the mayor or council salaries to the City Clerk at least 48 hours prior to the scheduled date of the meeting, so that we can have a defined list of proposals to discuss and vote on, rather than an open-ended discussion that could easily see us having another midnight meeting. Let’s try to avoid that. I will, as I said, I will give plenty of notice of the date of this meeting, so that there is plenty of time to send in any proposals. That said, I have a request for suspension of the rules on Orders 132 and 13321. This is an order that Mayor Stephen L. Dina Tally be authorized to execute, the release deed for Parcel A and then subsequently for Parcel B of 16 Market Street, as outlined in the enclosed order and release deed. I would need a motion to suspend before we can take comment on this.
So move.
I have a motion.
Second.
Motion and second for suspension of the rules. Madam Clerk, please.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Hughes?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Squallia?
No.
Counselor Van Hazinga?
Yes.
Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Counsel... President Zerella?
Yes.
Counselor Boishman?
Yes.
Counselor Kucher?
Yes.
Counselor Dina Tally?
Yes.
Counselor Fleming?
Yes.
That is 1 to 10.
That being a 2/3s majority, the rules are suspended. The matter is before the council, and Counselor Squallia?
Has this gone through City Property Committee?
I do not... I believe that is the reason for the suspension of the rules, to avoid having to send it to committee and then back to council, because there is, I’m guessing, some urgency to Ms. Cervantes, is this... Would you like to present any details on this, or is there someone else here who would like to?
I just wanted to confirm that it has to the City Property Committee, and the City Property converted to the side yard program.
Okay.
Thank you. I should have known that, but... So I had Counselor Green?
My question through you to the city solicitor is, what... Are the abutters taking control of that property?
Yes, the abutters will be taking control of that property, and this particular property has gone through a foreclosure process in the land court, which has resolved the title issues that we have experienced in the past on other similar properties. So this is a good, clean side yard sales.
Thank you.
Okay, so briefly, before I go to Counselor Boishman, because I have apparently confused this with a different issue, do we have someone here who can briefly present the substance of this issue?
I guess I can, yeah.
I apologize. Thank you, Ms. Cervantes. Solicitor Bruce Terry?
So this is, this is actually parcel A and parcel B are really at one point in time in one property?
Yes.
And they were divided between these two neighbors.
Oh, that's this one.
That's this one.
Okay.
It has gone to city property. I think we've determined this to be surplus property. Then the matter was voted on and approved, I think unanimously by the side yard sales program.
Correct.
Based on these two bidders, and Ms. Cervantes has been anxious to have me draft the deed and the order and get it before the council, and we'd be very anxious to have you approve it this evening.
Thank you, and I apologize for the confusion. I do remember this now. There was a parcel that two abutters were interested in. They agreed to divide it and have apparently worked out the division amongst themselves. So that is what is now before us. Counselor Boschman?
The only thing I want to do is I want to make sure we don't run into the same situation we did on First Street, that we give them a time limit where they actually take the deed that you're drawing up and attach it to their deed like we're supposed to be doing and not wait 10 years down the road. It goes right. They get X amount of time to do it. That's the only thing I like to see happen on this procedure. If you recall, remember First Street? I think it was the corner of First and Middle Street. The lady didn't do that, and we had to come back in front of us.
My memory of the First Street property, and I could be confused because it's been a number of the side yard sales, was there was a merger of the side yard sales with the constituents' residence, but the side yard on that particular transaction was clouded by different liens. And then they had to come back before us because we wanted to release conditions so that they could actually facilitate a sale of their single-family home. So this case is different than that case because this case went through the land court foreclosure process. That foreclosure process discharges all those subsequent liens on the property. So what will happen is, if the council approves it tonight, the constituents will both pay a check of $300 to the city, and then we will have the mayor execute the deed, and we will record the deed. And the deed has, I believe, has the language in it to merge the title.
Okay.
So we should be fine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We should meet that concern, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Squallia?
Thank you. Yes, I forgot about 16 Market Street. I have it in my notes that on June 4th, 2019, we approved it in the City Property Committee. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Schultz?
Yeah, I was just going to ask how long the abutters have been waiting, so if she answered that question.
Thank you, Counselor Zerella.
Not a problem. Any further questions or comments? All right, matter is before the council.
Move to approve?
Second.
Is that, just to clarify, that's a motion on both?
Both 132, 133?
Excellent. I have a motion and second to approve both items. If there is no objection, we will take this by unanimous consent. Seeing no objection, it is approved. We then have 131-24, Counselors Paul Boschman and Samantha Squallia, to petition the city to conduct a study to investigate the possibility of transporting sludge in-house by the wastewater department instead of outsourcing this task.
Move all petitions be sent to their respective committees.
Second.
All right, because one of these is going outside City Council, I will actually take a voice vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, that passes, and that concludes our agenda. Some brief announcements. The Ward 1 meeting will be held this Thursday, June 17th, at 6:30 PM in this legislative building at 700 Main Street. Police Chief Martino, Lieutenant Howe, and other community engagement officers will be there to present and answer questions. In addition, DPW Commissioner Bosonetto, DPW Deputy Commissioner of Wastewater, Marowski, and Sewer System Manager, Maresa, will be there to discuss the ongoing sewer separation project and to answer any questions. Wastewater's in-progress combined sewer separation project will soon be entering a publicly impactful portion of the construction schedule.